Carolyn, Kristin, GIFT says his invitation is pending.
Panelists should already be able to sign in, but I'll double check.
There's no legal obligation for the city to annex property that meets the state requirements. Those are minimum.
Yeah, I mean, it's a state statute.
The city's requirement is to meet the neutral base.
Correct, that it meets the law, meets the statutes. There's no, you know, it's part of the MSA, it has the contiguity, you know.
Those are state requirements though.
State requirements and whatever other, they made some changes to the proposed motion.
You do the tests?
They register.
But no, I mean, we can pass, you know, I mean, there's no legal reason to deny it.
But there's no legal requirement to approve it if it meets all these requirements.
I don't know, we've never done that.
If they talk and they're, it can't fit everybody all at once.
At what point in the development of all that, like, most of the development of this slide is gonna happen out there.
Don't see everyone's name.
At what point does it trigger like an issue?
Well, we have the water because of Van Dever, so we have lots of water. We have, you know, Public Works has signed off on it, this is in the MSA, so it's nestled in there. So there might be ones that so far out there are so expensive that the city says, no, we can't do it.
Not yet.
But the city has said, we can do this, there's no reason not to. So there's no legal reason why we would deny it, but the real price is gonna be there.
I could see, I have the vision, I can, I don't have the intention to detail.
Okay, I'll ask him, anyway.
Not everybody has that.
He says, on your...
It's like an engineer hobby.
Yeah, such an engineer.
You can put things together in the right order and like...
This is a screenshot of what, this is a screenshot of what Yenida.
I cook, I love to cook, because you can just like throw. Here, talk. So let me double check.
Okay. And Kristin, do you have his number so you can, you can, let me give you his number so I don't have to be in the middle of it. Um, hang on a minute. It is...
Well, they did all sign up, so.
We do have a couple of chairs up here at the front. If you'd like to sit. Thank you for your patience, we're just working out some technical difficulties. We have one of our commissioners who is ill and online, so we're gonna get him connected before we begin. So talk amongst yourselves for a few more minutes.
Thank you.
I did, just on the way over here, at the candy store.
I'm okay for now, thank you. I'm not one of those people that like, if I have any caffeine after like, I can't sleep, so I try to light.
Maybe I just drink myself, that's not like... Normally I don't drink caffeine.
Yeah, oh, really? Yeah, you might.
We're not gonna take hands up. You don't sign up, you're not speaking, and I'm gonna make one noise. And I've also got a little speech about...
Civility?
I'm here to undermine all you know and love about Salida. My experience is when I do drink caffeine, it feels like magical, you know?
That's true.
Are we okay? Are we good?
We're good.
Do we have GIFT?
We're still waiting on GIFT, but I did, I can't hear you.
Still can't hear you. Okay, should we go ahead and start, I guess?
Hey Tommy, that's my water bottle. That's mine. I left it last time, I guess. In general, don't let me leave it again.
He can vote.
It's your responsibility.
He can vote.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Are we still? Okay, may I have your attention? May I have your attention, please? Hello? You know what, guys, they gave me a gavel. They never gave Greg a gavel, but I got this gavel, don't make me use it, okay? Um, we're gonna go ahead and get started, and Kristin's gonna continue to work with, with GIFT to get him online, right? And get through a couple of our, get through a little business. So, it is 6:07. Start the planning commission meeting, thank you guys for being here. Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Bomer.
Here.
Crebel.
Trying to be here.
Deringson.
Here.
Bush.
Here.
Walsh.
Here.
Riggs.
Here.
Tont.
Here.
Hodges.
Present.
Okay, we need to approve the minutes from June 23rd.
So move, to approve the minutes from June 23rd.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, okay, motion carries. Um, are there any, is there anyone here to speak to something that is not on our agenda? Going once, going twice, going three times? Are there any amendments to the agenda? No? Is there any new business? I get that, yeah. It's on my list. Okay, so is GIFT still online? Is he, is he there yet?
He is trying to sign in again now.
Okay. Okay, I am going to appoint one of our alternates, Sarah Walsh, to vote tonight on both of these hearings since they, they are the same matter. No, no need to split it up, and I think Salty's fine with that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. So Sarah will be voting tonight. All right, let's open the public hearing, proof of publication, yes? Staff review, Carolyn.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, and Commissioners, Carolyn Poisson, Senior Planner for the department. I'm happy to be here to present these items to you for your consideration. On June 23rd of this year, staff received an application from 5H LLC, represented by Walt Harder and Dustin Hughes, for annexing a 15.06 acre portion of an 18.32 acre property located east of Spruce Street and north of West Uray Avenue. Only the 15.06 acre portion, which is under separate ownership, is requested to be annexed at this time. A conceptual plan was presented at a joint work session of City Council and Planning Commission on June 2nd. This was not a subdivision application, it was merely a conceptual, which is what we often do with annexations.
Excuse me, Carolyn, could you speak a little closer into your mic?
Sure.
I'm not sure everyone can hear you, you might wanna raise it a bit.
And...
Thank you.
The resolution of substantial compliance for the annexation was approved by City Council. The site is currently zoned, mixed zone district, residential mixed zone district in Chaffee County, and properties to the west remain in Chaffee County and are zoned residential suburban. The remaining surrounding properties are within city limits and include the Cristone Mesa and Cottonwood Green subdivisions to the north, the Salida Golf Club on city-owned property to the east, and Mesa Village Cochatopa Estates and annex and Winger Minor subdivisions to the south. Next slide. This shows the entire process, we are currently at the Planning Commission hearing of the annexation and zoning. This is a state statute mandated process for annexations, and it has a very strict timeline, so we are within that timeline and moving accordingly. The public hearing will, before City Council, for the ordinance of annexation will be on August 19th. Next slide. The process, as I mentioned, is a state statute mandated process. The property does meet the 1/6th contiguity. As I mentioned, the compliance resolution was passed on June 2nd, and the hearing date is August 19th. The required noticing has all been either arranged or has taken place, and the findings of fact will be presented to City Council along with the ordinance. The Planning Commission is today, the public hearing is today, and the first reading is the 5th, with the second reading being the 19th again for the ordinance. The property lies within the municipal services area of the city of Salida and can be served by police and fire and city services, is a natural extension of the city's municipal boundary. This is the IGA map, the joint planning map with city and county that shows the MSA. This is an expert excerpt from Chaffee County Comprehensive Plan, which indicates an opportunity site designated for mixed residential, which corresponds to higher density development at the property's location. Next slide. In terms of comments from agencies, again, this is not a subdivision application, so we don't normally get into the details of road layout, landscaping, all that sort of stuff. But because a lot of commentary has come in, I specifically asked for comments from Public Works and Police and Fire pertaining to those. And the comments were from the Police Department, no concerns regarding the annexation. Note that any restriction of street connectivity would have negative impacts on emergency response times and access to the hospital. I am not in favor of having any dead-end cul-de-sacs or other limitations in the future development. From the Fire Department, appropriate access and turnarounds must be provided. From the Public Works Department, right-of-way connections have been developed on adjacent subdivisions for future street connections, and the area is within the MSA. Appropriate drainage and traffic analyses and stormwater management infrastructure meeting city requirements must be provided. Next slide, in addition, the Parks Department indicates that city code requirements for parks and open space, including dedication and development of public parkland, must be provided. The Finance Department indicates that system development fees will be required. The school, Finance Department, excuse me, the school district indicates that fees in lieu will be taken in lieu of land. The Chaffee County Planning Department indicated that a subdivision needed to be completed, but I believe we have resolved that with some correspondence that just happened today with the applicants legal and with the county, so that will, I don't believe, need to happen. The Building Department at Chaffee County had no concerns at this time, nor did the utility providers. I did just show these plat notes, again, because this was not a subdivision design, but just to show you where the basis of the connectivity for the streets come from. It comes from the plats of the previously approved subdivisions. And that's just another one on the Cottonwood Green subdivision. So with that, all of the requirements of the state statute for the annexation have been satisfied, and staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend City Council approve the proposed annexation subject to the standard conditions and conditions recommended by staff. And I will read those now for you because there's some additional conditions that were not in the original staff report. So in the annexation agreement, we would recommend that it states the standard condition that all proposed development shall meet the requirements of the municipal code. And then in the annexation agreement shall also acknowledge and document the following. The city's intent to serve the property with appropriate public utilities, a park dedication and compliance with city requirements as approved by city council. a park dedication and compliance with city requirements as approved by City Council. Street connectivity shall be provided through the proposed subdivision to accommodate appropriate emergency access and as per city standards. Pedestrian connectivity shall be provided to accommodate existing and potential future public sidewalks, shared use paths, and trail networks. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have on the annexation.
Any questions for staff at this point?
I think I have a question.
Dan?
Yep.
Looking at some of the feedback in the packet from the Public Works Department, I think you summarized it. And they specifically say, let's see, I'm kinda trying to get to the, I think, why a lot of people are here tonight. Why a lot of people are here tonight. They say, "Right-of-way connections have been developed for future street connections," as you said. They also say, "Limiting traffic through one neighborhood would adversely affect traffic in other areas. Having multiple points of connection spreads the impact out. Also, having additional access points is very critical when the day comes to rebuild infrastructure under the street, so as not to restrict access." I think that's generally the gist, but just to...
Exactly, and again, that's why I had David elaborate on that, so that was very clear what the Public Works stance was at this point, even though it's early in the discussion, but...
Okay, thank you.
Sarah, do you have any questions for staff? Salty?
No.
Aaron?
Carolyn, can you tell me, so Public Works says appropriate drainage, traffic, and stormwater. Can you tell us when in the process that happens?
With the subdivision application. So that's when we get all the data. We'll get the stormwater data, we'll get the layout of the utilities, we'll get whatever level of a traffic analysis is warranted by the number of units and things that Public Works will determine that. And then whenever we get the subdivision application, that's when all the agency reviews are fully vetted and completed.
Great, so that, 'cause a lot of people ask about the traffic, so that'll help when once we get the subdivision.
Yeah, it's, we don't, you can't do it with just an annexation.
And then, it says access through a subdivision, but it's multiple subdivisions access? And it's not really shown on the map where those right-of-ways are?
I'm sorry?
There's only, can you, can you just better explain how the property would be accessed? Because there's only one future street connection in the map.
Carolyn, please bring your microphone with you. Thank you.
I'm gonna let the applicant explain. Well, no, I'm not, because that's...
Bring, bring your microphone. We want to hear you on TV.
Kristen, go back a few slides to... See, I don't have the, it's... So, it's not a subdivision proposal, so there's, there will be multiple access points in the subdivision proposal. Right now, Cottonwood Drive deadends into the property line. And the street next to it, Crestone Drive or Circle or whatever it is, also deadends into the property. When we get a subdivision proposal, it will address appropriate access. It might include Spruce, it will definitely include Uray, it will probably include at least one, if not two, to the north. But we don't have a subdivision proposal yet, so I can't even really discuss that, other than what I just said. How's that?
Yep.
Any other questions for staff?
Sorry.
Okay, hearing none, thank you, Carolyn. We might have more later. Would the applicant like to come up and tell us what you think?
Hi, Bill Hussey, Civil Engineering Land Planner, Shredner LLC, representing my client, 5H. First of all, I wanna thank Carolyn for preemptively addressing the connectivity issue. And I'm happy to be here tonight, not disagreeing with staff on anything that Fire and Public Works and Police, actually, really, Police and Public Works are the ones strongly saying the streets need to connect. Carolyn says the streets need to connect. I, for a moment, played devil's advocate. And was like, can we, can we make people happier, not connect them? And Carolyn was solid, and we're lucky to have her being solid, and reminded me that this is just a principle of building a more resilient community. It's over a mile from Grant Street to County Road 146 that goes north-south, connecting 140 to Franz Lake. And these dead ends are not ideal from a life-safety standpoint. If you had a sewer main plug that had to be dug up in one of those streets, a water main break that had to be dug up in one of those streets, you got a hole, and then a house catches on fire on the wrong side of the hole, the streets need to connect. And there are gates and other things that you could do, but those things just are not as immediately safe all the time as a street connection is. So I wanna thank Carolyn for that and offer my support. The only other thing I wanna say about the annexation is just to go into a little bit more detail about what the IGA says between the city of Salida and Chaffee County. I wanna emphasize, first, this IGA was signed in 2010. Was predated by some planning efforts and adopted by the City Council and the County Commissioners. And it says specifically that these parcels in orange, the municipal services area, the county cannot accept a development application, per the IGA. So just wanna reiterate that, really, the decision on annexation was made 15 years ago. This has been teed up to come into the city of Salida at such time as it's gonna develop. And that's all I have for the annexation presentation. Thank you.
Do the Commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Stay close, I know you will. Okay. We will open public comment next, and before we do, I have just a couple of requests of you. There's a lot of you here, we're glad for that. We will hold you to a three-minute chat, strictly. We will not take hands up. So if anybody still hasn't signed up to speak, either to the annexation or to the zoning, this is your last chance. Three, two, one, thank you. Okay, here we go.
This is the annexation first.
This is the annexation first, right. There will be two separate hearings. The first one is the annexation, and we will hear public comment on that momentarily. Okay. I do want to remind everyone here that we are all volunteers, so please don't beat us up. We've had that experience before. And, and we would just like a little grace. We want to hear you, we want to hear what you have to say. So please, when you come up, speak into the mic, just like I'm doing now. State your name and address, for the record. Keep it respectful. And please try not to repeat points that have already been made. If you agree with someone that's made a point that you agree with, tell us that, and then tell us something new, in the interest of time. We'd rather not be, we didn't, the last meeting we had was four and a half hours. So we're wanting to close this before that. So, thank you so much for your cooperation. Okay, Greg, Greg Reed, you're first on the list. And for the people in the back, there are a few chairs up here. If you'd like to come and sit, we can push this table forward. Make room for you.
Hello, my name is Greg Reed. I am a resident of Cottonwood Green, 408 Cottonwood Circle. And I am here as an individual, as well as someone representing the Cottonwood Green Homeowners Association, and there are several of us here tonight. First of all, I'd like you to know that we, the Cottonwood Green Homeowners Association, know you work hard to try to meet the needs of the city, and we appreciate the time and effort you put in. We, as an association, are not against the annexation of the property. We are against the proposed rezoning of the property, as well as the proposed development plans we have seen, which I understood a minute ago that has not been any proposal for the development plans yet. And yet, they were posted on July 2nd. We had a meeting with the developer last week, showing us their plans with streets and houses and apartments and all that stuff. So I'm a little confused as to how that is so far ahead of the game, if we haven't even decided that yet. But having said that, as far as the annexation goes, again, we're not necessarily opposed to the annexation. I would have a few comments regarding the city planning department's involvement of homeowners and neighborhoods that are abutted by this property. There has been absolutely no communication. And when we have tried to reach out to the city planning department, we have been told, there's ex parte, we cannot communicate with them. So this three minutes you see right now is our first chance to actually voice our concerns to you, the Planning Commission. And that is very frustrating, as a citizen who lives in a neighborhood abutting the property. So, please understand. I do have some more comments that are more related to zoning, which I will address in that next segment of the, tonight's meeting. And if we are going to talk about proposals with streets and stuff, which is not part of annexation, but yet I've heard quite a bit already from your planning people who are up in front of me, about streets, again, that seems inappropriate, that they can talk about that now, if that's not the point of this piece of the meeting. So I will not follow suit. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, Rick Pilgrim?
Good evening. I've got a, I've actually got copies of what I was gonna say here. Would the Commission be interested in following along?
Have you already sent them via email?
No.
Okay, sure.
These are different.
Sure, send them up. Thank you. Thank you. There's two, actually, here's an extra one. Could you restart his clock, please?
Yes.
Is there a clock? Oh, it's right over there.
Right there.
Good evening. Rick Pilgrim, 308 Cottonwood Circle, property owner since 2008. First and most importantly, thank you for your service. Your job can be hard at times. I know this because my 43-year career as a traffic and transportation engineer, representing developers and others for projects like 5H. I also served as a mayor for 10 years for a small community in Denver. So I've been on both sides of, of what you're working with. I'll give you my comments in general, and then I wanna speak specifically to the comp plan from 2013. As Greg said, everyone's known that the 15 acres would be developed. We've assumed it would be very similar with the HOA governed neighborhoods that surround the site. The four neighborhoods are almost 200 homes. If you assume about three people per home, that's 600 people there, or about 10% of the population of the city. We're not elitist, but the character of the proposed plan is wholly inconsistent with the existing single-family residential development that surrounds the site. We're shocked and saddened by the lack of our ability to communicate with the planning department, or meet or understand, where the developers had several opportunities to do so. In general, I think that we could all use some more time. So I'm asking for you to consider a continuation here this evening. Maybe annexation? That all seems pretty similar and reasonable, as Greg pointed out. But to go much further, there are so many different things to, to really consider. I wanna point out that the comp plan adopted April 2013 is very, very helpful. It actually, Carolyn had points in the zoning that relate to the comp plan, but I'm gonna speak to these here and traffic later, I got a minute. Community character. Let me just read one of the actions under Design of the Built Environment. New development should be compatible with the traditional built neighborhood character and the subordinate, and be subordinate in mass and scale. In Chapter 3, Land Use Growth, Zoning and Development. In the text, "New development will be focused within or adjacent to the city to preserve the rural scenic character there surrounding and open spaces and agricultural lands." That action, under community character, new development should be, should complement the neighborhood's mass and scale. Housing. Neighborhoods and new existing, new neighborhoods or infill homes should be compatible with community character with respect to density, design, and demographics. New neighborhoods should mirror traditional patterns of nearby neighborhoods. We agree with that. But we wanna be a part of the process to help get there. And that, that is especially true about the connection, and I'll speak to that next.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, Mike Lloyd. Mike Lloyd. Come on up. Or down? Oh, that's a good idea, thank you, Dan. Yeah, Dan has suggested, and it's a great idea. I'm gonna call, I wish I could read this name. Cheryl Brugel? Next, after Mike? Come on up, Mike, yep. The next up is Cheryl.
You can use those chairs in front, it's the batter's box.
I'm sorry?
Those chairs?
Oh, yeah, if you wanna come up and sit in one of these chairs, if you're next, that'd be great. That would speed things along. Cheryl, I don't know how to say your name. Are you G-E-L-L, Brugel? Brugel? Okay, very good. Mike, you're on.
Okay, Mike Lloyd, I live in Cottonwood Greens. Let me give you a little background. I worked for a federal agency for 35 years, and anytime we had to do a project, we tried to involve the people who were affected by it right from the start. We asked them to help us develop the proposal, basically. That didn't happen here. And what I'm, Rick said this better than I can, but you need to involve the neighbors immediately, otherwise they feel like they're getting shoved out something shoved down their throat. And that, I think if you took a poll in the room here, you'd find that a lot of these people don't understand that sequence of meetings. They certainly didn't know about this until about two weeks ago. And it must have been some unauthorized copy that we saw, the proposed subdivision. I don't, and then I heard a story that somebody from the city actually prevent, told a subordinate not to release any information. That's not the way you involve people. And if you don't listen to people, the lawyers do the talking for you. And I don't think anybody wants to do that. I guess my, my complaint or my input here is that you need to involve people right from the start. That surely didn't happen here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Before we go on, Carolyn, would you like to speak to the, the draft that was at the joint session and what that actually is?
In general, okay, so having been a federal planner for many years as well, we're not, this development is private property. We are not expending taxpayer dollars in the sense of allocating funds for a major project to build a park or apartments owned by the city. So generally speaking, we follow the process that is allocated for private property development. And we do not have a process where we then go into a lengthy public input process with people before we receive applications. So when we receive the applications, staff reviews them, agencies are consulted as appropriate. And then when the meeting is posted for public hearing, that's when the notices go out, and all of the information that is submitted online for commentary to the Commission for the public hearing is forwarded to you. That's the process for public, for private property development.
So am I, excuse me, so am I to understand that you have received an application for annexation?
Right.
And you have received an annexation for zoning?
Correct.
But you have not yet received an annexation for a subdivision?
No application for a subdivision. The reason the concept...
Was that a no, you have not?
No subdivision.
Okay.
The reason the concept is brought forward is, that is a suggestion. It is an option that the developer has to present at a joint work session, which they did back in June, just to give City Council and Planning Commission an idea of kind of where they're headed in case the Commission or the Council has any real negative feedback about, no, this is absolutely not what we want, or something to that effect. So it's really just a very preliminary proposal. It's not even a proposal, it's a concept plan. And that was what came out on June 2nd. That is the typical process for all annexations and zonings, when the, when the developer chooses that option.
Do you have something to say to that?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, this is a private development, as you said, so the, the developer is perfectly free to consult with whoever he or she likes before it comes to the city, right?
Correct.
And that's, city is not part of that.
Right.
Got it.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on then. I hope that clears up some of that confusion on the preliminary plans. Cheryl. And next up is Sue Sully. Sue, if you want to come to the bullpen here in front of me so I can stare at you.
I'm Cheryl Russell.
Cheryl, yeah, please move your microphone down. We want to hear you.
Okay. I'm Cheryl Russell. I live on Mesa Court. And I think you answered my question because I was wondering if it went to the county before it went to the city. And you said yes. You know, as far as the county approved it, right?
Back in... I think that was the applicant's comment that back in 2010, the county and the city came to this agreement that this land would not be available for county use for a development so that it would be annexed as a part of the municipal services area.
Okay, because what I understand that would be the first plan is to have that happen before you could go forward.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Cheryl. Thanks for your patience. Okay, after Sue is Phil? Pecala? Pecala, I was close! Come on up, Phil, because you're in the bullpen. Perfect, okay. And so after Sue then would be Tom Hiddle. Tom, if you want to come up, TJ, and sit in the front of the room. Sue, you're on.
Sue Sully, I live in Cottonwood Green. I think a lot of the difficulty is... And I started fairly early on this, is to try to figure out what was the process. I contacted the city. I was not able in emails or phone calls to get any information about how it worked. So at this point, could we have some idea? If this is the annexation and zoning, and it depends on the proposal, when can we expect a proposal?
Be up to the developer when they submit the plan.
And that is in the next two weeks? In the next two years?
I don't know that there's... I don't know that there's any timestamp for that.
There's no timeline for a subdivision proposal at this time. This is an annexation and zoning.
Up to the developer.
Yeah.
Okay. The second question regarding... Was regarding zoning, so I'll hold that.
Thank you. Okay. So TJ Hiddle's up. Kim Anderson is next. So Kim, come on up to the front of the room. And TJ?
Hi.
Hi.
Tom Hiddle, 216 Mesa Court. Just for clarification, I should be on the zoning section, not on the annexation part.
Did you sign up for zoning?
I did.
Fine. Then you're good?
Okay, all right.
Do you have any comments for the annexation portion?
No.
Okay, you may sit.
Okay.
All right, after Kim Anderson, Ryan Delaney. I think I said that right, Ryan. Come on up. Okay, Kim?
All right. Good evening. Thank you all for being here and listening to what we have to say. I am a Salida resident on East First Street. And I was at the last council meeting, and I said that annexation should be a tool for community building. And I'd like to change that a bit to say that annexation should be a tool for community benefit. I ask you, with regards to this annexation, what tangible benefits are Salida residents receiving from all these new developments? Are we getting meaningful, affordable housing for our teachers and public servants? Are we getting protected bike lanes? Not just painted lines on asphalt, but lines physically... Lanes physically separated from traffic to keep our residents safe from the increased congestion? Are we getting large accessible green spaces to enhance our livability and preserve our quality of life? Mayor Shore recently said that the city is not soliciting annexations. They're coming to us. So I say, why not? Why aren't we proactively engaging with developers under a clear, community-driven vision? Why are we waiting for developers to tell us what they want when we should be setting the terms that reflect our goals? And why aren't we raising our inclusionary housing minimums? Right now, Salida only requires up to 16.7% of units to be deed restricted for affordability. Meanwhile, over 40% of renters in Chavie County are cost burdened. And the AMI is rising faster than wages, meaning affordable housing is increasingly out of reach for those who live and work here. Other mountain towns like Basalt, Crested Butte, and Telluride require 20% to 25% affordability, and some are considering more. So why not us? At the last meeting, Councilmember Cutelli said, preserving the character of Salida means preserving the characters, the people. I agree. But then I asked, what are we doing to actually take care of our people? Building more million-dollar duplexes doesn't help our workforce. How are our teachers and firefighters supposed to afford these homes? I say we must stop settling for the status quo and instead start setting the standard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So next up is Michael Flayes. Okay, did I say that right? Come on up, friends. You're next up. And Denise Wentz is gonna be next, after him. Okay, so Ryan?
Hi, everybody. Ryan Delaney, 106 Crestone Mesa. I'm opposed to the annexation, not necessarily because of this particular annexation, but it seems relatively disingenuous to me for us to sit here and say, well, we can't talk about planning details because we haven't had a submission yet. City staff has seen a plan. The developer has presented a plan. A plan exists. So to say, well, we're not gonna talk about the plan because they haven't submitted it yet. We're just gonna talk about this annex. Seems like you're putting the cart before the horse. The other challenge here, why would you annex a piece of property if you don't know what it's gonna be for? So I'm mostly concerned about our ability to interact with staff. So the way this has gone is an annexation application came in. There was a bunch of feedback online and then phone calls to staff. There was no responses or engagement. Those comments were shared, certainly internally, with other city staff, with other departments. The notes that were shared seemed to argue against feedback that had been provided without any actual engagement with the public. And it seems like it's working in conjunction with the developer here. And so if the only things I have to engage with here on something that's gonna affect me personally in this community is to get up and say, no, I don't want this annexation because we can't talk about traffic. But then we say, well, we can't talk about traffic yet. We don't have a plan. We do have a plan. We absolutely have a plan. So why can't we talk about all those things at the same time and not pretend like we don't all know what's happening here? The challenge for me is that if both of these motions pass today, I've asked city staff, when can I engage on the plan? After it's been submitted and approved by city staff is the next opportunity that this community would have. And then we're already on the back foot at that point because staff has already chosen to approve that plan and recommend you all sign off on that. That's not engagement with your community. That's making a decision behind closed doors and then asking us all to react to it. And everything I've seen so far seems to me that this is a foregone conclusion. We're gonna annex this land because of this agreement from 2010. We don't know what's gonna be on there. Wink, wink. And yet we all know what's gonna be on there. We know that they're gonna use the access through Cottonwood Green. We know they're gonna use the access through Crestone Mesa. We know that there have been questions raised about infrastructure. Is there enough water? What's gonna happen to the surrounding communities? And nobody wants to actually engage with that. No one... I don't... Let me rephrase that. I'm not opposed to development. I'm not opposed to more density of housing. But to march along this path and get us into a position where we can't backtrack because, well, we've already annexed it. We've already done the zoning. That, to me, is not engaging with your community. So I'm opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Wentz, are you wanting to come up and speak? Okay, great. Good to know. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Mike Flayes. Thank you for having us here. I live at 147 Mesa Few Lane. This has more to do with specifics of the actual plan that has been proposed by the developer. And a number of our neighbors have met with him. And it came to our attention that along the south side of the development, there is a fairly generous buffer zone between the proposed development and the homes that lie there. Whereas where I live and several of my neighbors on the north end of this, there is basically a five-foot setback from the property line as we understand it. And we feel that would very negatively impact our quality of life. And we request that the north side of the development have a very generous buffer zone as well, including landscaping. There's already a multi-use trail proposed for this, so we'd like that possibly be on the north side. I know this has less to do with annexation, but thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, do we have anyone other than Denise Wentz online?
We do have some attendees online.
Okay.
If you are online and you wish to speak on the annexation, could you please raise your hand? There's a button at the bottom of the screen on the Zoom app. Okay. Up first, we have Beverly Testa. And Beverly, I have unmuted you. You might also need to unmute yourself on your end. Beverly would like to know that her email has been shared. Do you happen to know?
Anything... Anything that I received via email up until 4:30 PM today, you guys got?
All right. Do we have anyone else online that would like to speak on the annexation? If so, please raise your hand.
We're looking for Denise Wentz, too.
Denise Wentz is online. I do not see her hand being raised.
Well, she signed up, or someone in her family signed her up.
All right, I will... All right, looks like Denise is raising her hand.
Great.
Denise, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, you can. So I would like to speak on zoning.
This is the annexation at the moment. Would you like to speak on annexation at all?
I... No, I want to speak on zoning.
Okay, we will call you back for public comment.
Yeah, and her name is on the zoning form as well.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That concludes the public comment that I have. If there's no one else online?
I do have a comment from Director Olmquist.
All right.
Who is online, but he's in a loud place, so he's asking me to...
Let the director speak.
Yeah. He's wanting me to relay that this being the annexation... So an annexation agreement is the negotiated agreement that occurs with an annexation. And typically with that annexation, we will include the code-required element, sort of standard language for inclusionary housing. I don't know if the speaker who stood up realized that we have an inclusionary housing ordinance. And 1/6 of the units of any development, over five units, require to be built to affordable housing standards in accordance with the ordinance. And sometimes it's more. And if there's any percentage of fraction of that that's not provided, then fees in lieu are given to the city, which goes into our fund. Anyway, and then... So given that it's an annexation, that's why some of those conditions came up because we knew they would be issues. But we don't get into more things like buffers and landscaping and all that because we don't have a subdivision application at this time. And it's... The process is the process. Staff follows the process that we're given in the code. We're required to abide by that process and as were directed by senior staff. And that's just how we function.
Does the director have any other comments?
Nope, not at this time, but he might jump in later.
Okay. All right, I am going to close public comment.
Commissioner Boomer.
Is there...
Beverly Testa, would you like to try one more time to speak?
Or did she not?
We answered her question about her email, but it sounds like she might want to read it.
Let's make sure before we close public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Public comment.
Beverly, if you would like to read your letter, you'll need to unmute yourself.
I'm unmuted?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the email I sent to Carolyn, which she did acknowledge and said it would be shared with all planners, but the planners seem unaware of it at this moment.
We have received quite a number of emails through the course of this process, and we did receive three additional ones this afternoon, which I personally have read. So we've mucked our way through all of them. To the best of my knowledge...
It's attached. I see it. I read it.
And it's attached, so... No, we're not unaware.
So everyone on the planning committee does have a copy of it. I don't need to reread it if you all have a copy of it.
We got copied on...
And acknowledge it.
Yes, ma'am. We got copied on all of the letters and emails that were sent in. And thank you for that. Thank you for being... Making sure. Is there anybody else online?
That's it.
Okay. I am going to close the public comment on the annexation of the 5H. Is there anything that the applicant would like to say to rebut anything or to explain anything further? Nope, okay. That leads us to commissioner comments, commissioner discussion. Who wants to go first? Usually it's me, but it's not me tonight.
I'll do the honor. I think the reason why I wanted to start off is because I'm hearing a few themes that I think maybe have different solutions. And I think it's helpful if we group our discussion around those themes. I think one is communication and process. I heard a lot of people say, I didn't feel like I was in the know. I didn't feel like I understood the process or how to hear my... Or get my voice heard. I think that's very real, a very appropriate conversation to have. Maybe goes beyond this planning commission meeting. But that's sort of like one bucket of things that we are being asked to consider. The second is the pure annexation question. And yes, I know it can be frustrating to know that what you all care about as citizens is like, how's this gonna impact my family and my community? But there is sort of discreet administrative decisions that go along, and then there's opportunities for public comment for that very reason. So I think that that's one question. And then the third will be the zoning. So to me, I see it in three different buckets. And I do think, while the communication and process question goes beyond us, I do think there's some things that I think we could address in this room regarding that. One being, I think there is... You know, there is the state mandated process, and I've also worked on the government planning side. And I know typically our government folks are underworked, overworked and underpaid. However, could we do better in some sort of community engagement way that goes above and beyond state statute? I think we can, and I think that can be bigger than this. Second, I do think there is a bit of an onus, maybe not a state statute onus, but an onus on the developer to engage with the community as well before it even come, like I, no offense, Ryan, but there was no wink-wink, because I personally have not seen a concept plan. So I have not seen a concept plan, I have no idea. So I, you know, there is stuff that happens before it comes to planning commission, and I do think there's an onus on the developer to engage with the community in a better way, and we need to be encouraging that.
Yep.
I second that.
I agree also, and then maybe you mentioned this earlier, too. I think there's, I have a question about like when the infrastructure assessment happens, and is, was it part of the IGA? And there's parts that happen once we get the development, but there is a bit of like annexes, it gets zoned, there's certain things you can do by right. Like I would think it'd be helpful to clarify when in the process certain things of a big nature happen. Like, it doesn't get triggered by one property, but then another property comes, another property comes, another property comes, and we always hear, "Oh, it's not part of that, it's not part of that." But at some point, it does seem like, you know, and you talked about water, you talked about other things, I think it'd be helpful to just, for all of us to know when in the timeline that happens and when the city confirms, "Yes, we have water, yes, we have sewer, yes, we have this."
Well, I think the, the city staff, the public works department, has already confirmed those things. Is that right, Carolyn?
In terms of?
In terms of, we have enough water, we have the
Yeah, that's what
resources to support a development of some kind in this.
Yeah, so the, so everyone knows the municipal services area, the orange surrounding the city, is the extent to which our wastewater and water treatment plants can service those properties built to maximum density. So that's the assumption in the calculations that are made. A lot of stuff in town has, even in recent annexations, has either not been built to maximum density, or we don't even know what it's going to be built to, but that would be the cap. There's, the planning area is the yellow, which is kind of up for discussion, kind of, could we possibly expand to that?
Up for discussion with the county as well?
I'm sorry?
Up for discussion with the county.
Exactly, so it's, it's a process that goes hand in hand with the county. But the, the, the conceptual plan that we talk about, that was a joint work session of city council and planning commission that everyone was invited to, and it was, the agenda was given that it was the 5H LLC conceptual plan. Not everyone attended that, but at that time, that is meant to be when you all and city council can have a discussion about this kind of stuff. There's not a public hearing element to it, but there's certainly a discussion element to it. And so that could maybe, your suggestion might be, maybe that should be more robust. Maybe, you know, there should be more neighborhood involvement, I don't know, you know? But right now, our process is, is how I kind of showed it. And it's, you know, that's what it is right now. Other cities have area plans where they get into the details of neighborhoods. We don't have that in our comp plan.
Kristin?
I also just wanted to mention that we do have Commissioner Kribel online now. He's been online since about 6:11, so.
Would he like to speak?
He's unmuted, I just wanted to.
Thank you.
He can jump in.
Easy to forget that someone's online.
No, I have nothing to say about the annexation.
Okay. Salty, did you have any comments? Okay, so we're kind of going down a rabbit hole. Right now, what we're here to do is to decide whether or not we annex this property. So that's kind of where we're at, if you have any other discussion points.
We're going to put the motion back up so you can see it.
I'm sorry?
We're putting the motion back up just so you can see.
If you have any other comments surrounding that, based on what you've heard tonight, or other questions for staff or the applicant, now's the time. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Okay, I move to recommend the city council approve the proposed 5H LLC annexation as it meets the findings of fact for annexation, subject to the following conditions to be included in the annexation agreement. Number one, all proposed developments shall meet the requirements of the municipal code. Number two, the annexation agreement shall acknowledge and document the following items. Item A, the city's intent to serve the property with appropriate public utilities. Item B, a park dedication in compliance with city requirements as approved by city council. Item C, street connectivity shall be provided through the proposed subdivision to accommodate appropriate emergency access and as per city standards. And item D, pedestrian connectivity shall be provided to accommodate existing and potential future public sidewalks, shared use paths, and trail networks.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Giff. Is there any other discussion about this before we take a vote?
I think what I'll just add is that, you know, by no means does, an annexation, that there's sort of a, like, an administrative component to it, there's reasons to do it for utilities. People who eventually live in there can vote. Like, there's sort of these administrative reasons to annex a property, whether or not it gets developed any time in the near future. And I can say, by no means does it mean, does any concept plan mean it's a foregone conclusion or any, you know, any subdivision requirement. I've seen this commission delay voting on a subdivision where literally nothing was changing in the House whatsoever. It was one plot purely because we wanted to understand the details. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
Sure, and I'd just like to comment, this recommended motion that has been seconded. The things that were, were added by staff, the intent to serve the property, the park dedication, the street connectivity, the pedestrian, all of that is just to, to have those things in the annexation agreement so that when a subdivision or planned development comes about, those things are discussed. It binds us to having those things in future conversations. So with that, any other comment? We'll take a vote.
Well, Carolyn mentioned affordable housing as part of that, but it's not in the motion, does it need to be?
Well, it's, it's not in the annexation, it is part of our code.
Yeah, and it's, it always goes on the plat, the standard note that it, the.
And personally, I'd rather not see it in the annexation, because what if the code changes? You know, so.
It, it's part of the standard for the plat.
So it's parks, and it's in there, it's just.
Well, they wanted to ensure that, because I don't think that part is in the code that way.
You can certainly add a condition that, that any development shall meet the inclusionary housing requirements of the code.
I mean, I'm comfortable with the requirements of the municipal code, is that's the.
Okay, yeah, that's covered it.
Well, and I will say that if a planned development comes before us, that's another negotiated process, and sometimes more affordable housing can come out of that process. So I'd hate to tie it to this if we're going to negotiate later for something different. Okay, shall we vote? Yes, Tommy, wake up. Would you like a, would you like an espresso bean? Yes.
Colby?
He's not here.
He's not here.
Derrison?
Yes.
Yes.
And Walsh?
Yes.
And Kribel.
And Kribel.
And Kribel.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. So we move on now to the zoning, which I know is a topic of great consternation amongst our neighbors. Okay, so, Carolyn?
Thank you. Again, this is the zoning request.
Proof of publication has been met, yes?
Yes, the publication has been met, it's, the attachment is in your packet of the snippet from the, the snippet.
Yes, from the paper. The request is to zone the 15.06 acre property to R3 high-density residential under the current code. As I previously indicated, the site is currently residential mixed in Chaffee County, and I described the properties around it, so I won't repeat that again. Going into the review standards, the R3 zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map indicates a mixture of variable and higher efficiency neighborhoods, which is consistent with R3 zoning. The proposed annexation lies within the MSA and is intended to accommodate higher densities. Pedestrian connectivity will be able to be provided to adjoining neighborhoods. And the proposed R3 designation is generally consistent with the zoning and found in the adjacent properties and would continue the surrounding patterns of development. In addition, the proposed zoning is consistent with the purpose of the R3 zone district and allows greater flexibility for providing both single-family and multifamily housing. The proposed zoning is occurring because of the requirement to zone the property when it is annexed into the city in accordance with Section 16450 of the Land Use and Development Code. And, oops. Therefore, the staff recommends, the planning commission recommends city council approve the proposed zoning of the property as R3 high-density residential as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and will accommodate appropriate development densities to support the housing goals of the city. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Kribel. Would R3 zoning allow for a development which would not be consistent with the neighboring developments, i.e. Cottonwood Green, Crestone Mesa, and I can't off the top of my head remember the name of the development that's to the east?
I think my question actually pairs with that, because they're surrounded by both R2 and R3, and I kind of, how do we, how do you, does one distinguish between?
Yeah, so when those subdivisions were developed, number one, the ones to the south are quite a bit older, and there was a lot of impetus in the city to allow large lot developments. That was actually, this is owned R3, and the lots are way bigger. They're more like R2, R1 standards almost. So as you know, our, our focus in the mandate from city council and from the community is to have appropriate densities so that we can have more affordable housing. Because if you don't build housing, you don't get more affordable housing. And if you don't have density, you have higher, you know, cost of housing in general. So the R3 does allow for more density. The maximum would be, if you literally took the maximum density allowed in the code, would be a maximum of 312 units. If you used R2, the maximum density in terms of just units would be 239. That's taking the entire land area.
Can I just build on that? And what about, can you explain the difference between that and what it, the county zoning of residential mix?
I have no idea what the county zoning is. So in theory, you know, if someone came in with all multiple family in R3, it would be, you know, up to 35 feet high and could be multiple units in a building. We don't know necessarily what is being proposed, we've seen a concept. It did not have all multifamily in it. But the R2 is a little less than that, but could still allow a mixture of single-family and multiple-family.
But if we were to zone this R3, and then a plan came forward which had multiple apartment buildings in it, that plan would be to code, and we would be required by law to approve it?
Yes, with just the caveat of, there's also things to consider, like the streets required, the traffic analysis required, the, the open space and landscaping maximum, lot coverage, and parking requirements and, and all that that come into play with multifamily developments. So, yes, there could be.
I'm not talking about necessarily the number of units.
Okay.
I'm talking about the scale of the buildings compared to the scale of surrounding buildings.
Well, both R2 and R3 do allow, any housing in the city can be up to 35 feet high. So whether it's a multiple-family unit or a single-family. But yes, R3 or R2 could both allow for a mixture of multiple-family and single-family.
But there, there are different kinds of multiple-family dwelling units.
Right, and we don't have a subdivision proposal, Giff, yet, so that's not really part of this discussion. It's just the zoning.
Part of this discussion is to determine whether we would, would zone this in a way which would be inconsistent with the surrounding properties.
Excuse me, excuse me. Pardon me, we are at a business meeting. I'd really appreciate that, you know, I understand, you're excited, you're enthusiastic, it's emotional. You want to clap, but we're trying to get through this, and it would, it's really distracting for us to do that. So I'd appreciate your patience with us as we work through this process.
Yeah, well, I mean, if, I, I can't comment, it's up to you guys to decide. But as you know, if we only built what our next-door neighbors had, we would have a very different-looking city, that's all I'm going to say.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions for staff at this time?
One other one, Carolyn, can you maybe remind us of the process going forward? So once you zone it, they still have to come forward with a subdivision plan in order to build anything? There's nothing that can be done by right until it's subdivided?
Correct.
But, that's correct, but as long as it's to code, we can't say no.
You mean as long as it meets the zoning requirement?
Well, city, city council makes that decision, the planning commission doesn't make that ultimately.
But then, but if I, that's correct.
I know what you're saying, yeah, if it's by right, if they meet the, you know, the setbacks and all the code requirements.
I think that, for my commissioner, fellow commissioners and staff, I think what Giff might be trying to say is that without a subdivision agreement or a solid plan having been submitted, plan development, subdivision, all of that that's negotiated, we really don't know, we can't be certain how many units might be constructed on this property. And so I think what I'm hearing Giff say, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Kribel, is that why would we raise the density when we haven't, we, we have, we have R2 on one side, R3 on the other side? Why would we not take a conservative standpoint on density because we don't know what's to be built? Is that what you're saying, Commissioner Kribel?
Yes, and we want to be sure that we get a development which is in line with its neighboring developments.
Okay, we hear you. Any other comments or questions for staff? Questions for staff at this time? We can always come back.
Yeah, so the difference between R2 and R3, because I think this is important for everyone who does not, like, read the land use code to go to bed at night, is primarily the number of units?
It's, so there's a maximum square footage per unit in each zoning classification. And in R2, it's 2734 square feet per unit. In R3, it's 2100 square foot per unit, and that is when it includes inclusionary housing. They get that density bonus, so it's a little lower than the, the straight code.
And it is surrounded by both R2 and R3.
Yeah, R2 on the, on the.
Can you build a 24-unit apartment building in R2?
If it meets the minimum, maximum density, rather, and the setbacks and is less than 35 feet high.
It might be limited impact review, but I can't remember.
Yeah, I mean, it, it still requires city review. You know, any multifamily development still, under our current code, requires a review. It's not strictly by right, so there's a review involved, so I should have made that caveat.
But, but there is a by-right component. Once it's annexed and zoned, there is a by-right component where someone could come in and say, "I'm just going to do what I want to do by right, what I'm allowed to do by right."
Over-five units is, has either a limited or a major impact review, as does a major subdivision, so it still comes back to you guys and goes to city council.
And I do have a comment from Bill, Bill Almquist, if I can add it in.
Sure, yeah, please do.
He would like to reiterate, too, that the FLUM, the future land use map, does show that it is a mix of R3 or R2, R3 or R2 or a mix.
Right. Okay, yes, and if I'm not, you know, if I may, on the report we have, the packet, it does say, "The proposed zoning conforms with the city's future land use map, which calls for either variable residential neighborhoods or higher efficiency residential neighborhoods." So either one fits in with the future land use map.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for staff before we move to public comment? Or actually, it's, uh?
Applicant.
Applicant, yeah.
And then public comment.
Bill Hussey for the applicant 5H. I want to first mention that a week ago, we did have a meeting at the Scout Hut and invited the neighboring HOAs, and we had a great turnout. We had about 50 people come to that meeting. We presented on our conceptual plan that has 96 units on it. And that's the same plan that was presented, I believe it was June 2nd. You all know the dates better than I do, June 2nd. So that plan, we agreed to disagree on a lot of things. We found some things that could be mutually beneficial that we're working on, so I just want to say that that is ongoing. And that's the first time in eight years of doing this that I've done that on a private project, and that distinction was brought up. For South Ark neighborhood, we did tons of those, but never before for a private developer. So that is because these guys want to do it the right way. I'll keep talking about 96 units, even though it's not what is on the table right now. 96 units designed to blend in with the surrounding neighborhoods is a lot different conversation than, you know, if you give us an R2 zone and we build 239 units, you'd have a harder, impossible time designing 239 units on these 15 acres to feel compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. The reason that we're asking for R3 then is obviously not to go from 239 way up to 312, which would be ridiculous. And to get back to whoever asked the question about, can you do 24 units in R2? And yes, and I think I heard Sarah say, "Yeah, if the lot is big enough, you could condominiumize these units, make the streets public access and right-of-way, public access and utility easements, but include them in the lots, condominiumize everything, and do 239 units." I'm sure that we, as a city, could find a way to stop that type of a development. And you can always find a drop of stormwater that's going the wrong direction and run us around if we really bring something awful back. So it's not the number of units is the only point I want to make. And if we could go back to my slides, these aren't my slides, skip these, these don't matter. Carolyn covered these really well, I don't want to repeat anything, keep going. This is the R2 versus R3 thing, and I want to thank Kim Anderson, who said, "We do not need more million-dollar duplexes." This is the conversation about R2 versus R3. So I'm just going to show you two things that you can do in, in R3 that you can't really do in R2. Go back to the previous slide, please. And I should add the caveat, because I just said you could do 24-unit apartment building in R2. What you end up with next to it is like a big. private space that's empty, and it's maybe like a private outdoor space or something. We don't want to do that. As the comp plan says, we'd like to design a traditional neighborhood where pedestrians are prioritized, everything has a porch on it, faces the street, and the parking is hidden to the alley. So when you restrict yourself to doing that, that's when R3 really starts to help you. Do some things such as townhomes are like the next step beyond a duplex in providing a little more density and naturally occurring affordability. You can't do these in R2 with the reasonable kind of dimensions showing up there that we see in the market, because what I've drawn there is a 30% landscape lot, which is the minimum in R3. In R2, this wouldn't work. You have to have 45% landscape, you'd have to take that 23-foot-long backyard and stretch it out a lot more, you'd have to find one-third more landscaping. So that's one issue with building townhomes in R2 that's difficult. If we go to the next slide, most of Salida is zoned R2, and you don't see a lot of multifamily housing, and the examples that you do see have issues because they're limited to 15% parking on the lot is like the big limitation. So you end up with, you know, reversing out onto the street, which your code doesn't allow anymore, so that's not even an option. But in the past, that was one way that people built multifamily housing in R2, and it's not the right way to do it. To do a, to do a reasonable parking lot, you need more than the 15%. And I'd like, just because we are coming up on a land use code rewrite, the first of these problems is solved in the rewrite, but this one is not. So this is a discussion about do, how far do we want to go on the affordability of this neighborhood? And that's, just to reiterate, the R3 thing is not to achieve 312 units, it's to build 96 with more favorable dimensional standards to fit this variety of housing products into a more traditional neighborhood design. Until I have any questions?
Sure, I guess, maybe I have, I guess my question is, that, that sounds great, but how do we hold you to it?
It is a two-way street, I don't know what else to say. This is a zoning conversation, so, you know, if we want R3 because of all the reasons I just said, you know, if you zone us R2, we'll probably just be nice about it, because that's the right thing to do. You know, the devious part of me says, "Let's build 239 condos in three-story towers with flat roofs." Pull me back if I'm being too mean, guys, I'm just stating, you know, if these nice guys get hit by a truck when they're driving together somewhere, a bank takes this, could very well decide to do 239 condos, but the other part of that trust is the market is just not there yet, especially two miles from downtown. We all remember the big hull of a loo about Salida crossings, the vote to go to four stories, right when I moved to town eight years ago. We went through all this drama, and the market just wasn't ready for like parking underneath a four-story building. The market is not ready for 239 condos on this unit, nobody, on this parcel, nobody knows that better than my clients. That's why the concept at the moment that we're continuing to work on and accepting input from the neighbors is for 96 units that blend into the surrounding neighborhoods the best we can while, while meeting affordability goals.
Maybe you could tell us a little bit about your timeframe with the zoning change coming and the ability to do negotiations in the subdivision agreement?
Do you mean about the draft land use code, or?
One of them is fixed by the code, and another could be fixed in a subdivision agreement?
Yeah, well, we can't negotiate really subdivision agreements, that would be a PD, which we may end up doing anyway, but the thought is, it's just a lot easier to have less things to negotiate in that PD, which R3 would give us the better dimensional standards in terms of landscape coverage and parking coverage that we need to do this. We are in a funny spot where we're, we may subdivide under the current code and build our units in the future code, which we need to be careful about, but that all depends, you know, on how quickly the draft is adapted. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, it's helpful, thanks.
So is, are you planning to have a plan development?
There are items in the current plan that would lead us that way.
And so if you did a plan development, then the, there could be a change in zoning overlay as it relates to a specific subdivision proposal as part of the plan development?
Yes.
So if this body were to zone it R2, and you were to come back with a plan development and an absolute, you know, an absolute detailed subdivision, you know, laid out with what exactly it's going to be, not, not a concept of a plan, an actual plan with the, with the PD, you could overlay a different zoning on top of this, which would be, which would apply only to that plan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Stay close, I know you will, because you love us. Trying to keep this light, guys. How do you kill a circus? Anybody know? Right, go for the juggler. Wah 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 wah. Okay, we are going to have public comment now on the zoning specifically, and we have a list of people, and I will call the fir, I will call, as Dan Appleby suggested, I will call the person, and then the next person to come up so that we can move this along. Bill Barnes, and the next one is Paul Jensen. So Paul, come up also. After that is Rick Pilgrim again, so be ready, Rick.
Thank you for this evening. I'm Bill Bormus, 143 Creston Mesa Drive. I'm impressed with how concerned you are about our welfare as neighbors. For me, one of the many joys of Salida is attending the city council meetings, listening to the civility invocation, which always reminds me of the importance our sitting places on listening to others, to their ideas, to their opinions, to their concerns. Recognizing the value of collaboration, of community involvement, and of balanced support is what Salida stands for. I'm not against the development next to us, I am concerned at the lack of input allowed from the development's neighbors and the lack of consideration for how much it will impact all of us surrounding this new part of Salida. Please here inadequately address our deep concerns by making adjustments that allow all of us to be better neighbors for more considered initial development that carefully addresses our, the neighbors of 5H concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Bill. Paul, come on up, and Rick Pilgrim, where are you? There is, there are chairs up front for the, and the, what did you call it, the batting box? I'm so-
On deck.
On deck. I am not a baseball person. So, yeah, Rick Pilgrim, you're on deck, and see, I'm learning. And go ahead, Paul Jensen, thank you for being here.
My name's Paul Jensen, I live at 309 Cottonwood Circle. I hope that most of you have driven around the golf course and looked at the existing neighborhoods. You'll find nice, single-family homes with plenty of parking on larger lots. Then if you look at Creston Mesa, you drive in there and you see crowded lots, a lot of cars parked on the street, and a park with a lot of dead grass and not many trees. Which kind of neighborhood would you like to live in? They're proposing 96 units in this proposed subdivision, very few families have only one car, so you could have 192 vehicles in this subdivision. If one-third of those vehicles come through Cottonwood Green, it could add 64 cars every morning and 64 more in the evening. This could be a very large disruption to the quiet neighborhood that we live in. I think it's very important that the city do some kind of traffic study to see what kind of impact this will actually cause on the surrounding neighborhoods. I believe the staff report is incorrect. I believe that eight apartment buildings with parking lots is not compatible with the existing neighborhoods that surround that area. R3 is not appropriate for this location. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. That was Paul, Rick Pilgrim, Sheriff, Sheriff Marchese, Marchese? Yeah, you're up, if you'd like to come up and sit, it might be less awkward for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to speak specifically about traffic, but I submitted those comments, and thank you for reading those. I agree with Commissioner Preble that now is the time to set scale, and your questions a moment ago, I think were very appropriate. Zoning invests the magnitude of the development that's going to happen, and the what-if, I appreciate that, but there's no guarantee that you're actually going to have a planned community or, or that the developer is going to have some magnanimous thing that they do in the future. I was kind of surprised, the threats from the applicant engineer about, "Well, we could be bad people and we could do this", is that really what, you know, comments should come from the applicant? Let me make the record straight, we had actually asked for the meeting with Mr. Harder for last week and appreciated the time that they spent. Your upcoming code change, the map from the April workshop and the PowerPoint actually designates the whole area up here, R2, and so I, or, and that might have been a couple of months ago, but looking forward, it still is a compatibility thing, it's not an intensity thing. So, you know, the concept design from June 2nd, in the upper corner, it says, "Cottonwood Drive extends into the proposed neighborhood, becoming the primary spine and through, through the site." We had offered last week, and in my comments, a couple of conceptual ways to do this. I don't think it opposes what the police and the fire comments were for annexation. You can still make connections all the way through the development, but it doesn't have to be a through route. Finally, in terms of traffic generation, and I was using the ITE Institute of Transportation Engineers trip generation, at the concept amount, 96 units, that'd be about 720 trips, but you can see that Creston Mesa is only about a third of that, or, I mean, is, is only 50%. Crest, Cottonwood Green, it's just half, similar to Cochatopa. So that's a lot of traffic to be generating right in the middle of everything that's going on there. I'll go back to the comp plan. Principal T1 transportation, develop subarea plans. We'd love to work with you to develop a subarea transportation plan.
Thank you, Rick. Greg Reed is up next, after Sheriff, and thank you for holding your clapping.
Sheriff Marchese, 406 Cottonwood, couple comments. Number one, we did a petition.
Excuse me, we're, applicant, excuse me, we're trying to hear public comment and it's disruptive. Thank you, I appreciate you have a lot to talk about, but we want to hear Sheriff.
Thank you. Couple comments. Number one, we sent a petition around digitally, and people signed it, and then we had all the HOA presidents do a handheld, they went to every home and got signatures of people against this zoning, so be on the lookout for that. I vote R2. Our Cottonwood Greens is R2, and I base it on that because the traffic, we need a traffic impact study done. Safety, we've got disabled people living in our subdivision, we've got young families, we've got grandkids, somebody could get hurt if you got that many cars. I'm figuring 211 cars. If every family has two cars, husband, wife, and a teenager has a car, say 10%, that's 211 cars going in and out. It's going to decrease our property values drastically. Jeff Post, a local realtor, told me that the additional traffic would impact our property values. Number four, in line with the gentleman on the phone, when he said the development should be in line with other developments, I'd like to propose to Dustin and Walt, why don't you build a Cottonwood Greens too?
Address your comments to us, please.
Be beautiful. He could build 60 homes on that, on those lots, and then there's no affordable housing at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I know Greg Reed is up, and is it Amy Reed? Isn't it? Yeah, I'm sorry?
She's not speaking.
Oh, she's not speaking, okay. So after you, Greg, oh, it's a cross-out, I just thought it was a really messy signature. Tim Donnelly is up next, then.
Again, my name's Greg Reed, I live in the Cottonwood Green subdivision, 408 Cottonwood Circle. A couple of things, now that we're talking about zoning, I was looking at the planning commission staff report on zoning that was provided to you, and I had a couple of comments to make. On page three of their staff recommendations, they state that the comprehensive plan includes new development shall be within city municipal area and be developed at maximum densities. So they, they choose to use that as justification. They do not include another piece of the comprehensive plan, chapter six, on page 50 of the plan, that says, "Neighborhoods new and existing or infill homes should be compatible with community character with respect to density design and demographics. The city recognizes that the cost of infrastructure per household is reduced as density increases, and dense housing should be encouraged to the extent possible without negatively impacting the character of existing neighborhoods. New neighborhoods should mirror traditional patterns of nearby neighborhoods," and that's in the comprehensive plan. Additionally, their third bullet on page three says that the zoning of R3 high density would be consistent with the zoning found in adjacent properties. That is simply not true. I invite you to walk around or drive around Cochatopa Estates, Mesa Village, Mesa Court, Creston Mesa, or Cottonwood Green. You will not find compatible R3 buildings there. So please understand that. In closing, I would say that our homeowners association is against R3 high-density subdivision with approximately 96 units on the proposed development plan that Mr. Harder shared with us. While there are a few condos and townhomes in our surrounding neighborhoods, there are no apartments. The Cottonwood Green Homeowners Association formally requests the Salida Planning Department Commission and City Council to keep these properties zoned as R2, which is compatible with our surrounding neighborhoods. Doing this, the Salida's Planning Commission and City Council would be creating a new neighborhood that blends in with the surrounding neighborhoods and preserves the safety and quality of life enjoyed by the hundreds of us living in Cottonwood Green, Creston Mesa, Mesa Village, Mesa Court, and Cochatopa Estate neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next up is Tim Donnelly, and Kim Anderson is next, after that. Come on up, I have a seat, Kim, while we hear from Tim.
Yeah, thank you. My name's Tim Donnelly, I live at 409 Cottonwood Circle, and I was just, I want to give you the petition that we put together.
Sure, and, and just so you know, it was sent to us.
We did receive it.
We did receive it, we'll be happy to take a hard copy as well, since you printed it off, let's not waste paper, okay? We did receive all of that.
Great, thanks.
And reviewed it.
I'm just gonna, you know, I'm old and senile, so I'm just gonna read one of my paragraphs. You know, Salida is a small mountain town, so why-
Excuse me, just a minute, if we could take the sidebar outside, thank you very much. Okay, Tim, could you, yes, yes, could you just reset his clock, please? Okay, very good.
Thanks. You know, Salida is a small mountain town, so why do we need so much R3 high-density construction? If residents wanted so much of this density, they'd probably move to the Front Range or the I-70 corridor. Wouldn't a mixture of R2 and R3 density provide a better variety of homes and neighborhoods for the community? That's all I have. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, Kim Anderson is up, and Ryan Delaney, Delaney? Is up next. So, if you want to come up and make it easy for us to move you along? Okay, run when your name is called. And Carol, Carol, I can never say your name. I'm sorry. I know you. Yeah, okay, you will be after Ryan. Okay, yes.
Kim Anderson again. And I am advocating for R2 zoning instead of R3. I have several reasons why. One, it preserves the neighborhood character. R2 zoning supports single-family homes and duplexes, helping maintain the scale density and feel of existing residential neighborhoods, where R3 allows for higher-density multifamily housing, which can drastically change the rhythm and appearance of a lower-density neighborhood, such as more traffic, fewer trees, and less privacy. It reduces traffic and parking strain. Higher-density developments under R3 zoning can bring significant increases in car trips and on-street parking congestion, especially on narrow streets. R2 provides a balance. It allows for modest density without overwhelming local infrastructure. Three, more manageable infrastructure load. Water, sewer, and stormwater systems in older neighborhoods may not be built for R3-scale density, and I understand an impact study is still pending on that. R2 zoning growth is incremental and less disruptive, keeping utility systems and roadways functioning reliably without requiring costly upgrades. Four, it supports owner occupancy and stability. R2 neighborhoods often attract owner occupants rather than investors, helping maintain community cohesion and civic engagement. R3 zoning can invite speculative development and absentee landlords, shifting the area toward short-term rentals or transient occupancy. Five, it encourages gentle density. R2 allows for the missing middle housing like duplexes and ADUs, without tipping into large apartment buildings or stacked units. This provides affordable buy-design options, meaning smaller homes and shared lots, while fitting the scale of a traditional neighborhood. Six, more public input and local control. R3 projects can be large enough to trigger variances, height waivers, or conditional use permits that are hard for neighborhoods to influence once the zoning is in place. R2 projects are usually small and incremental, giving residents more time to weigh in and participate. And lastly, R2 zoning projects against overdevelopment. Once land is zoned R3, there is little to stop high-density construction by right, as we mentioned tonight, even if it no longer fits the community goals. Keeping R2 zoning gives a city more time to plan intentionally, especially if infrastructure, parking, or school capacity hasn't caught up. For all these reasons, I urge you to zone this area as R2, not R3. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Okay, so Ryan is up. Carolyn is after Ryan. Judy Gilbert, get ready, you're on deck, after her.
Cool, thanks. First of all, wanted to apologize, I didn't mean to assert that you all had seen this plan. Plan I was referring to was on the city website. City staff has obviously interacted with the developer about it. Everybody in this room has seen it. My big concern when it comes to the zoning has to do with what I think most of you would consider to be planning-level details. What's the access? How is it laid out? Again, I don't understand when we, as neighboring communities, have an opportunity to engage with those sorts of details until a plan has already been submitted and approved by staff and recommended for your approval. So, as a result, I have to engage now on the zoning piece. My biggest concern is I live on Crestone Mesa Drive. Crestone Mesa Drive is shown as a major access to this. The zoning density then matters to me because it impacts the number of cars. So, if I have to choose to engage on the zoning details, or, excuse me, the planning details now, because I won't have an opportunity until much later in the game, I feel like I'm being forced to say, look, if I have to choose between one or the other, I'm going to choose the lower one because I don't know the details. As other folks have mentioned, you know, there have been alternate access opportunities presented. There have been gates suggested. There's been cul-de-sacs. There's been connecting Cottonwood Green with Crestone Mesa. Again, I get it, those are all details that'll be discussed later, without any of us in this room having an opportunity to engage, except for a select few, until it's approved. My main concern, then, is we have to limit the number of cars. And I think the way that happens is with the lower-density zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, Carol, Carolyn, and then Judy Gilbert. Judy, hang on before you speak. Is Judy here in the room? Yeah, okay. Do you want to come up and sit so you can be ready to speak? And then, after Judy is Rob Weber. Okay.
Good evening. Carolyn Kichenski, number 403, Cottonwood Circle. I also object to the R3 high-density door being opened, which, based on the preliminary feedback called out from the Public Works Fire Department and Safety Department, seems to be driving the need for multiple access roads. I get that, but that's a key objection point as well, creating traffic issues that we spoke out. On the flip side, would the Public Works Fire and Safety Departments still require these three or four added access roads if the density plan, a lower-density plan, is put into place? A little bit cart before the horse there again. My key objective, like I believe most here agree, is to maintain a lower-density zoning aligned to the surrounding neighborhoods, which have survived to date without more access roads as a lower density. On a short-term basis, I have a worry about what happens as the construction goes on for five years, six years, seven years? I've seen it take that long for similar. And what kind of access will we give, or would the town allow all the construction vehicles to do? Are they going to go through our small developments as well? Big concern, I don't know the timing to address that. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, Judy Gilbert's up. Rob Weber, you're next, if you want to come up. I'm sorry? Okay, you're just so close, right? Okay, Judy.
Hi, I'm Judy Gilbert. I live at 162 Mesa Circle. You know, it's unfortunate that this development is happening now. It seems like if this had happened in the beginning, before all these other developments had sprung up, we wouldn't have this kind of conundrum of traffic issues. I don't know how many single-family dwellings are going to be in this plan, but it just seems like to get more people, you have to have more high-rises. And with the retirement community that's here, I think most people would like to see a single-family home all on one level. But I don't know how many the plan is for that. I think to get more density, you could maybe do more ADUs in this development. So, those are just some ideas. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, Rob. And then Denise Wentz is going to be next, but before that, TJ, did you want to speak on zoning? You came up earlier and said you did, so I've got you down before Denise speaks online. Okay.
So, most of what I wanted to make sure was covered off has been said. I did want to flag out, though, I watched the meeting where the annexation and zoning for Mesa Ridge subdivision was considered, and want to thank you for the R2 designation for that, which is just north of Cottonwood Green and Crestone Mesa. And also limiting the number of residential units for that subdivision. Appreciate it.
Okay, TJ Hiddle, Tom Hiddle.
Hi, Tom Hiddle, 216 Mesa Court, in the Mesa Village subdivision. I'm a retired landscape architect. I've been on a number of design teams over the past 50 years of practice. So, the one thing that I want to say is, in addition to the density issues of R3, I agree with just about everybody that's come through so far, that R3 is inappropriate for the entire subdivision. Our subdivision, Mesa Court, is all single-family residences. And I don't know where R3 came from, but I can tell you that Mesa Court and Mesa Circle are effectively R1. So, I just wanted to address that. And then, the other point that hasn't been addressed so far is that in the preliminary, excuse me, in the schematic plan that the developer showed us last week, there was buffer talked about, but effectively, there was very little buffer on the south side. And I noticed there was another gentleman that said there was supposed to be buffer on the north side, and there wasn't any buffer. And what I'm talking about are plant materials that are lower story, middle story, upper story, and not just a rubber stamp like you see on the development plan now. So, that's the one thing, those are the two things that I wanted to address that hasn't been addressed before, but I certainly support, the R1 and R2 zoning. Thank you.
Is Denise ready to speak? Denise Wentz?
Denise, it looks like you are up. I've asked for you to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay. I'm Denise Wentz. My husband, Dr. Ralph Wentz, and I reside at 220 Mesa Court in the Mesa Village subdivision. Our property borders the land owned by 5H LLC, who's requesting the annexation with the R3 zoning. And I have strong objections, and I can speak on behalf of my husband, too. We both have strong objections to annexation of this property to R3. The 5H property is surrounded by primarily single-family homes and custom homes, you know? The Cottonwood Green, Crestone Mesa, Cochatopa Estates, and Mesa Village subdivisions were built essentially as R1 zoning. Mesa Court and Cochatopa Estates are presently zoned R3, but your recommendation is changing the zoning to R2 to be compatible with the other subdivisions and the way we were built with the adoption of the new land-use code. So, essentially, with this change, the 5H property will be surrounded by R2 subdivisions. And also, I want to interject that there are multiple maps that show Mesa Court and Cochatopa Estates as yellow, being zoned R2. So, putting the R3 high-density subdivision with eight apartment buildings in this area and next to the golf course is not, it is not consistent and compatible with zoning and densities of the majority of the adjacent properties. This plan will not mesh with the neighborhoods. This major subdivision, as proposed, would not only dramatically change the character of the neighborhood, but also negatively affect the values surrounding home and properties. And we're talking about over 20, 200 units and four subdivisions. For example, Jason and Tamara Gobin had a buyer cancel their contract on their home in Glenwood and Cottonwood Green after learning of this proposal. So, we feel that this will be the start of the erosion of property values. So, in 2022, Shafie County did a housing needs assessment. And in that assessment, they determined that Shafie County will need an additional 1,105 extra housing units. And this is based on a projected 570 new jobs created by 2027. I don't know if that many jobs have been created. Shafie County has several R2 and R3 subdivisions and planned developments, such as Confluence Park with Slider Ridge Apartments, Two Rivers, Angelview Townhomes, Angelview Apartments, West Bend, James Place, Dreamers Street, Mesa Ridge.
Denise, I'm sorry, thank you so much for your comments, but your time has expired. Appreciate your comments, though. I think we get what, I get your drift. Is there anyone else online?
If you are another attendee online and you would like to speak, can you please raise your hand? Again, is it the button at the bottom that says raise hand? No one else is electing to raise their hand?
Carolyn, did Bill have another comment?
I do have a couple clarifications from Director Omquist.
We close public comment before we do that? Okay. All right. Having, seeing no other hands raised online, and having gone through our list, we will close public comment and listen to what Director Omquist has to say.
So, the future land-use map, which was just approved, I believe, in 2022 or so, was intended as a tool so that we could respond to and address more current housing conditions. The comprehensive plan was approved in the 2010, 2013 era, when housing was about 75% cheaper than it is now. And so, to build a lot of single-family housing seemed perfectly appropriate back then. But the reason the flum was produced was to address the city's demands and needs for affordable housing, workforce housing, a multiple styles of housing in places where we have very few opportunities to grow. So, we just want to make that clear. It's a little bit of a history lesson that I would love to have one of these single-family homes, but I can't afford it. And I make almost $100,000 a year. So, there you go.
Pull the disclosure.
That's with a lot of other things besides my salary.
Okay, so, thank you, Director Omquist.
And then, I just, one other thing was, just to clarify, because the new code was brought up. The R2 in the new code, if you do the slider, the reason a lot of the R3 around this goes to R2 is because of the minimum density element that is proposed in the new code, which would make those huge lot subdivisions non-compliant with minimum density. And we didn't want that to happen if the new code would go that direction, and it's a total if, that will even be part of it. So, not to bring that into the discussion, but that is the reason that that occurred.
Okay. All right. Well, not to get into the weeds too much, does the applicant have anything at all to say about, to talk to these comments that would be factual and helpful? Yeah? Briefly?
Briefly. Cat's out of the bag on traffic when you have a civil engineer for a neighbor. That's bound to happen. So, I have some numbers that I just want to recite. I emailed this slide to Kristen.
Okay, excuse me, but we're not really looking at traffic right now, we're looking at zoning.
Fair enough.
Does it, if it dovetails into that, I'm happy to hear it.
It does impact the zoning question.
Okay, go ahead, then.
Thank you. Do you have that slide, Kristen? If not, I can just say the numbers. I came to the same 700-something trips a day that Rick did. The Institute of Transportation Engineers publishes rates. They also publish, it wasn't in the slides that you had before, I just emailed it to you if you can get it. If you can't, no worries. They also publish how many of those trips happen during the worst hours of the day, which are weekdays, morning and evening, when everybody's going to work and school, coming home from work. And when you distribute those through three different ways, and we could argue till the cows come home about do more people want to cut to the hospital or cut to Poncha? I just put all the trips to their closest collector's street. If you're closer to 160, you go that way. If you're closer to 140, you go that way. Some are going to swap, and it averages out. So, Crestone Mesa, these are added trips per peak hour, so the worst hour of the day. So, here's how many trips get added in the morning time, worst hour, through Crestone Mesa because of this development. 15 in, 20 out. Evening, 17 in, 10 out. Cottonwood Green, morning, 9 in, 12 out. Evening, 10 in, 5 out. County Road 141. Rick, talk to Rick, folks. He's got these numbers, too. Morning, County Road 141, 20 in, 26 out. Evening- Evening, 21 in, 12 out. Those are just a lot less scary numbers that I wanted to get out there for folks because 700 is square is a little scary, but it happens over 24 hours. That's all I wanted to say about traffic. I see where the questions are leading that I'm getting from planning commission. And I would just like to reiterate that when you look around R2 in town, you see single-family and duplex homes. I don't think that's what we want in our new developments from an affordability standpoint and a range of incomes, living together in a neighborhood. But if you zone us R2, that's the message that you're sort of sending. And if you insist on doing that, because I understand folks are concerned, you know, please, if you can, give us some inkling that, that you still want, which we sort of have already from the conceptual review, where it was all flowers and rainbows with the 96 units. But just again, on principle, would prefer the R3. And there are the slides, but I'm all done. Sorry for, sorry for throwing those in at the end. I didn't want to talk about traffic tonight. That's why I didn't send them before.
There you went, right? Well, and I do understand that traffic is, dovetails in, but we're really trying to keep everyone focused just on the zoning here. So having closed public comment, we are at Commissioner comment. And I'd love to hear from my fellow commissioners how you're feeling. Who wants to go?
Okay, well, I'll start by doing what I do, which is just pointing out the tension here, which has come up multiple times. Density and affordability are going to come in conflict with the desire to preserve a neighborhood character in a small mountain town. That is going to be what we are wrestling with. Hopefully, not me in 10 years, but the planning commission for the next 10 years. It's every single development in Slida since I've been a part of this, and people who've been here longer can say the same, that is surrounded by well-resourced communities have stood up and said, I'm concerned about traffic. I'm concerned about the character of my neighborhood. And then other people say, I'm concerned about affordability, and I'm concerned about housing. We, we don't have the perfect answer to that. We are here to wrestle with those questions within the confines of the authority that we have. But no, like, that is the tension. That is at the core of what everyone is feeling in the city of Slida during this change. And we are also feeling it and also wrestling with it within the confines of what we are allowed to do and where we have discretion as a commission.
Thank you. Who's next?
I, I think about that question a lot, too. And I think about sort of who Slida is for and who gets to live here. And is it just folks that can afford a big house? Or should it be somebody that can live in an apartment or condo or townhome? And having that mix is important? And I struggle a little bit with the compatibility question because like Carolyn said, if it all has to be compatible and consistent, then we don't ever get to build those higher-density pieces because you just have to keep replicating what you have. I don't think that's a fair standard. I think we should look to how to mix those appropriately. And that's, you know, I guess that's going to come in the design phase. I, I thought the explanation, because I have the question. If you can have 239 with R2, and you're only going to build 96, and in some of the emails that have gone back and forth, they've said, we're happy to commit to that. And maybe we should talk about that. Why do you need R3? And I thought the explanation was perfect, that we want to have these design standards. We want the community to feel this way. And we can't do that if we're restricted by lot density requirements and parking requirements. I thought that was a great explanation. And, you know, to me, the, the other concern or thing we might want to talk about is how, you know, what are the mechanisms to hold that to the plan? To say, okay, we, we hear you on R3. If we give you that, how do we make sure that the commitment you said, that you're going to build this kind of neighborhood, you know, we maintain?
Yeah, I mean, if we are asking the community members to sort of stand up and talk about one discrete decision at a time, and, and, and we're saying, hey, we're not making a decision on a concept plan, I do think the reverse is also true, that it's beholden to us to make a decision based on, are we comfortable with the max number of units that would be possible in the zoning that we're approving? Because it's not a cert, and I under, trust me, I get that that, but I'm not going to make a decision based on the goodwill of a real estate developer or anyone. Not, I, I love real estate. But, or anyway, that's not how good public, that's not how good public policy is made. Do you know what I mean? We have to make a decision based on, are we comfortable with what the max would look like? I think that is incumbent on us in our decision-making process.
Are you, I'm sorry, Dan?
I would echo what's been said. The notes I took here was, R3 is not Manhattan. I understand it's, it's dense compared to like, you know, a 40-acre ranch or something. But we do have to kind of consider what that looks like. And I, what you said was really like, are we comfortable with the max? And that's something I've been trying to wrap my head around. And Aaron said the same thing, too. I would also say a little more density allows less cars. I know everyone has a car for the most part, but everyone, at least in my experience, said we want to preserve the small-town character, which, you know, our little downtown is pretty dense. And if everyone doesn't have to drive there, we can build more of that. We can have more of that town. And the last thing I would say is renters are us. Like, we're, we're kind of talking like they're other people. Renters are us. And like, whether that's apartments or houses or condos, like, I just, I feel a little uncomfortable saying it has to be single-family homes everywhere. There is a place for, one of the commenters actually said something to the effect of gentle density. You know, maybe not quite that concept, but there is some kind of mix that is, is going to work for Slida. It's going to have to work.
So did you have any comment?
Um, yeah. I would just like to say that I don't believe that property values are going to go down in this town.
Excuse me, excuse me. That's, that's not appropriate right now. A commissioner is trying to speak her mind. And I'd appreciate it if you could listen to her, just like we've listened to you. Thank you.
Um, I also would like to say that we labored over that future land use map about a, a little over a year ago, not even a year ago.
Been a while.
Uh, it was like 2023, I think. Um, and we had already slotted that area for higher density. And there's not a whole lot of developable, developable property. And we really do want our affordable housing spread out throughout the entire community so that we don't just have like one concentration where all the pores get to go live. And most of those guys can't come to a meeting like this. They're still at work trying to pay rent. And so I'd like to say something for those people. And I'm sorry if it.
No, thank you. No, 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 that's fine. So I'm going to make a couple of comments if the commissioners will allow it. I want to go back to the statement, the bullet point in the packet that says the proposed zoning conforms with the city's future land use map, which calls for either variable residential neighborhoods or higher efficiency residential neighborhoods. I, like Aaron and most of the rest of us, I mean, we understand that we have to have density to survive. We have to slice it up a little bit to be able to have affordability at some point. But there's nothing here to hold our feet to the fire. That's, that's what I'm concerned with. So I would love to see, personally, an R2 designation. I would like to see the developer come back to us with a planned development and subdivision agreement that we could negotiate on firm, solid ground and even possibly upzoning to R3 at that time. Once we see exactly what it is that, that, not a concept of a plan, an actual plan. So that's my opinion. I don't know if my fellow commissioners agree with that, but I would like that to be negotiated. I'd like to have the developer and the neighbors during that downtime of what, however much it is, have focus groups, get together. I'd like the city to do the traffic study, you know, the actual, you know, so that we know exactly what's going on. But our purview today is simply to zone it. So I'm uncomfortable zoning R3, not knowing where the stops are, as you said. So that's my opinion. I don't know.
I guess this might be a question for Steph. Is that procedurally possible? Like, let's say, I think what you're getting at is a world in which there is a concept plan that the developer has that majority of community members feel comfortable with. You're never going to make anybody happy. That's impossible. But, or everybody happy. But at that time, if we say, look, this actually fits our 3 zoning, and it, and it, you know, we're able to utilize the advantages for parking and layout and all that, and we're comfortable with it, could we upzone? Like, is that procedurally possible?
You'd have to go through a rezoning.
Right.
Again, and you also can't condition a zoning.
No, no, I'm not conditioning. I'm just saying that would be my preference. Because if we were to zone at R2, and the plan could be presented in R2, then we wouldn't need to do that. But if the plan required R3 for legitimate reasons, then that would be a possibility with a planned development where we could also negotiate affordability in housing.
You know, we're, this is GIF. We're talking about affordability. I mean, if it's 96 units, R2, 96 units, R3, there still have to be 16.7. One out of every six of those has to be affordable.
True. Well, has to be.
And, and, and so I am not sure that, that R2, R3 difference designation makes a whole lot of difference with affordability. It makes a difference with the scale and how it fits into the other.
Exactly.
Surrounding neighbors.
Right. And at this point, we don't have anything solid to stand on to say that it would be 96 units. You know, except for the word of the developer.
Is there an opportunity to procedurally somehow inject that number into this? We're happy to commit to that. There's no doubt.
I hear that.
That would have had to happen with the annexation.
No, it's done. It could, it could happen with the subdivision.
Oh, yeah.
Or at city council. Could, yeah, city council could interject that with the annexation agreement if they so chose.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. There you have it.
There we go. Commissioners, your thoughts?
I think that, you know.
Hang on. GIF, you couldn't hear that. Mr. Harder was publicly committing to 96 units. Go to council and, and put that in. If we zone at R3 to state, to at council, that it would be a maximum of 96 units.
In the annexation agreement.
And they put, exactly, adding it to the annexation agreement. That's what he said. You couldn't hear.
Okay. I hear that.
I'm just trying to like pinpoint kind of logistically where our subjective discretion lies within this decision-making process. Like, that feels important, understanding like, what are we actually making a decision on? Because there are certain things where there are discretion and some places where there isn't. And I think, and I would love to hear from the rest of the commissioners, it is within the item 3 in the staff recommendation, compatibility with surrounding zone districts and uses. Is it consistent and compatible with the zoning and densities of the majority of the adjacent properties within the city? And those two things are actually different because we know it's compatible with the zoning. And that's not the question. We know there's R2 and R3 around it. Like, that's, that's just a fact. But those properties weren't developed at the density of R2 and R3. They were like, as we've heard and everyone knows, we've all been in those neighborhoods. They are more along the lines of like an R1, R2 density. So I, I'm not, I don't have an answer yet. I'm just saying, to me, that's where our discretion actually lies.
Well, in our, in our comfort level. I mean, we could zone this R2 following through that. And council could change, could add the caveat to the, to the annexation and then flip our zoning to R3. That could happen. And, and, you know, I guess I'm just, no offense, Walt, but, you know, I guess I just, I want to, I want some kind of, other than, you know, you saying that you'll do it, you know? I mean, I'm sorry that we didn't have this conversation earlier with the annexation, but, you know, we, we need to be really careful with, you know, what we're, what we're, what we are doing, understanding that we're, we're recommending to council. Council can change it. So if, if, so Carolyn, let me ask you a question. If we were to recommend, and it's just a hypothetical. If we were to recommend R2 zoning, could we also, I can't remember the word for it, but we could, could we also ask council for consideration of what Walt, Walt is doing?
Not with the zoning.
Not with the zoning?
You meet the, you meet the.
It's just R2 or.
Conditions of the zone district.
Just R2 or R3. That's all the leeway we have.
But they are welcome to, you know, watch these and.
No, they're not. The lawyer says they can't watch us.
Oh, well, okay, never mind. I, I'll have to ask legal for advice as to whether I could pass along.
Nina is on the line. Nina, this would be a really good time to pop in.
She's right there.
Hi, Nina.
She is. Oh, we can't hear you.
We can't hear you yet.
Yeah. Way in, Nina, please.
Can't hear you.
Unmute, Nina.
I mute.
She's unmuted.
Oh, wait.
Hang on, we're not, we're not hearing you yet. We have to do a testing, testing.
Can you check what microphone is being used on your end? Make sure it's the correct one.
Double muted.
Or put it in the chat, type really fast, and we can read it.
We want to hear you.
No.
Bill's also weighing in, so as soon as I read his, I can read his.
While, while they're checking, I just did some quick math. I mean, I'll be right, but if it were R1, I think you could do 87 units. So it's really only 10 more units than R1 that they're proposing, which seems.
Sure. I don't have any, any objection to the 96 personally. I just don't have any, under, any, any teeth.
It's, agree. I think, I think we're all kind of, kind of agreeing.
Yeah.
It also sounded like the comments we heard, like 96, like 300, whatever. Hmm, scary. But 96 seemed broadly palatable.
Right.
Based on what they were. That's what makes it, if you're referring to the comments, public comments, I think the palatability isn't. There was one specific comment.[1573.85] It's not the density, it's the structure or the nature of the units. That's. Well, that's an issue.
Which puts us way back to your initial comment.
Yes. Can I make a motion?
Sure. We can have, we can have additional discussion if it's seconded.
Okay. I make a motion that this be zoned R2 with all of the other comments that staff has made included.
Is there a second?
What are all the other?
Well, all you, the motion just states that it meets the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance. That's all you see.
Okay. All right. So I guess all I really need to do, I would take the motion and substitute R2 for R3.
That works.
And get.
Is there a second? Well, I'll second it. Yeah, we can vote on it. Any other discussion before we vote on this? And if it fails, we're back to where we were.
Bill's got his.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hang in. Chime in.
Yeah, it looks like Nina's having, continuing to have some audio difficulties. I'm in a little bit quieter place right at the moment. Um, I, I just wanted to mention, and I'll look at Nina's face as I say this, um, to see if I'm down the right road with it. But, uh, but basically your conversation around the idea of acknowledging the developers' uh, self-imposed cap could be relayed, uh, to city council through the staff report regarding the annexation. Because that would be the appropriate place to put any sort of caps, um, onto a development regardless of, of the zoning.
Yes.
Um, and I'm looking to Nina at the moment. Hold on. Um, Nina, if you want to type anything else in that we can certainly, uh, forward on to planning commission. But, but that is certainly something that, um, could be brought up, that in the zoning discussion, there was, uh, questions about the applicability of setting such caps. And like I said, that is something that could be done through the annexation and the annexation agreement.
So what I think.
She's shaking her head yes.
So what I think I'm hearing you say is that we, if we approve this R2, uh, staff in the packet to council could express our desire for them to cap the unit, number of units in the annexation before they consider the zoning. Is that correct?
That is correct. They could certainly do that as part of the annexation agreement.
I, I just want to point out though, that doesn't address sort of the issue. I mean, I guess this is just where our decision has to lie. But like what Erin said, that, you know, there, there was a valid reason from a design perspective for the R3. And so that does.
Sure. But council could still do that. If we throw it to them, they could still.
Gotcha.
Upzones R3, add the 96. We've got the guarantees we're looking for when we make our recommendation and we leave it in council's capable hands to.
I mean, this seems like a vote of.
Our recommendations. Recommendations.
Yeah, to throw our recommendation out the window and do what they want.
Seems a little weird.
Yeah, exactly. I know, but it's where we are.
I mean.
I, I will, it's sort of out of line, but Walt, if you're gonna speak, you need to speak in the microphone so we can all hear it.
I just need to reiterate that my commitment was to R3 with 96.
I understand that. Yeah. And that would be up to the council, for you to make that case to the council when it goes to them. Makes sense? All right. Well, should we discuss the board? Huh? Who's speaking?
So, yeah, can I?
Giff speaking?
I think it's background.
No, it's background. Okay. Okay. Yeah. They're all at a party. So are we, right? It's one word. Anybody else want to?
So I guess just to talk this through in my head.
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Or I guess not in my head. We're in favor of R3, but we're a little apprehensive. Now, that opens the door to way more than 96. And we've been burned in the past, I think.
And we don't.
So this is a way to kind of get some reassurances there using council.
Yes.
So we do R2 now so they can.
So they can revisit.
If things fall apart between now and city council meeting.
But I also heard that there is a procedural way to approve R3 with, and have a unit cap.
Right. That's what we're talking about.
Well, no, we're talking about approving R2.
I know, but we can't do, we can't approve a cap in the zoning. We should have done that in annexation.
But I don't think we've completely foregone our opportunity to do that.
No, you can't. You can't do it in the zoning.
Right.
And you can't change the.
Right.
Motion of the annexation now.
Right. We can't go back. Right. We've already.
Yeah, but we haven't drafted an annexation agreement.
Right, but it's.
We've agreed to annex. We haven't drafted the details of the annexation.
Agreed to recommend.
We've, we've agreed to recommend it to council and that's as far as we can go. Yeah. I'd love to go back and do it, but no.
Well, but also, that's not entirely true because there's also opportunity for subdivision discussions and development agreements and planned development agreements.
There's all kinds of options.
It is not a closed door.
No, it's not. And we're only recommending to council anyway. So I would like for council to consider Walt's proposal of 96 units in the annexation agreement and then to consider with maybe some, some assurance of why R3 is needed for those, you know, a real detail, um, you know, a little more detail than what we've seen, maybe. Anyway.
So what do folks think about R3? We haven't really explicitly talked about that.
Well, I, I don't know. I think it, I'm, I don't like the idea of personally, I, I'm not in favor of having R3 in there without any kind of, um, boundaries. Um, because R3 opens it to, to multi-use properties that R2 doesn't allow. So.
Multi-family, not.
Pardon?
Multi-family.
Multi-family, right. So there is, there is a distinction. If we knew that it was 96 and we knew that we were gonna have this many, like the plan said, this many single families, this many duplexes, this many whatevers, and it's capped at 96, then the case could be made to council to go to, to throw our R2 out the window and go to R3. But since we, we've passed that opportunity sadly, I wish somebody had stopped us, but anyway, um, this is where we're at. So we, we have a choice. We can, we have a motion on the table with a second for R2. We can vote on that. If it fails, we can go back and do R3. Those are the two choices that we have.
Folks have other comments on?
I don't.
I, I mean, I, I, I could see that area, that area I think needs a mix of R3. I think that's the area where we've seen that the slide is gonna grow and it needs a mix of denser development.
Right. But doing it without a stop, that's what you, you and I are both.
I mean, I'm, I'm still spoke, trying to be laser focused on where the decision actually lies. It is around the consistent compatible with zoning and densities of the majority of adjacent properties, plus the conflicting guidance around, to Salty's point, there's a lot of time and energy put into the future land use map. And there was intentional decisions made to highlight certain areas for higher density. So I think that's, there, there's a somewhat conflicting focus on being compatible with the existing properties and envisioning a world in which there are more mixed income developments.
This particular parcel lies in between two, uh, medium density. It doesn't lie between R3s. It, it's in the middle of the R2s. However, that.
There is R3.
On the, on the plan, on the map, you know, and the map says it can go either way.
I, I think part of the challenge though is everything that surrounds that is already built as super large lots. And so there's not really any other opportunity in that zone that's a split of proposed R2 and R3 to put R3 because it's already very much large lot development.
Right.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, is there something wrong, like with our, R3 zoning? Like, we kind of have like setbacks and land landscaping and all those requirements built in there already, right? So it's not like it's a free-for-all. They still have to have, meet the parking and the height and the zoning and the setback.
It's just higher, it's, it's a much higher density is all. And that's what the neighbors here have been concerned about, is doing it without any kind of a, of a stop.
Uh, I mean, yeah, that's.
But there is a stop. Right. I mean.
Well, not really. I mean, it's, you know, if, if, we don't have anything solid, we don't have a subdivision agreement. We don't have something showing what's gonna be developed there. So we're, you know, we'd be, we'd be approving it without any kind of understanding of what might be built there.
Well, knowing that it would.
Has been proposed.
Meet our heart, height requirements and our setback.
Right, that's right.
All of the zoning codes that we've already put a lot of work into.
It's a lot more, it's a lot more dense than R2. And it allows for more multifamily properties that aren't allowed in R2. So that's, I think, what the neighbors concerned are, are gonna have a bunch of apartment complexes in there, which.
Could someone explain to me in the new code, there's something about if, if, um.
And the new code is denser.
Affordable, affordable housing is met, you can go up to 45 feet high in R3. Is that correct?
There's nothing like that for residential, Giff. That's, that's, there is no new code, first of all. Um, and any kind of housing, height increase is just commercial near the Safeway area downtown.
Yeah, that, that would apply only in a certain portion of downtown and, uh, certain portions along Highway 50.
Okay, got it.
I'm gonna call the question. I'd like to vote on this, R2, and go, and move forward, one way or the other.
Did we get a second?
Yeah, we had a, we had a motion and a second.
Yeah, give a second.
For R2. I think Giff made the motion and I sent it seconded just to get it done.
Okay.
This is for R2?
Yep.
Okay. Over.
Yes.
Crevel.
Yes.
Deringson.
No.
Bush.
No.
No.
Walsh.
No.
Okay. There it is. So do I have a motion for, uh, R3?
I'll make a move to recommend city council approve the proposed zoning at R3 identity residential zone district as it meets the applicable, applicable review standards.
Second.
Further discussion?
I mean, I think the, the thing that I keep coming back to is that the, the staff's recommend, I mean, I, I believe that there's, the staff has thought about that sentence. Is it consistent and compatible with zoning and densities of the majority of adjacent properties? And I think not only do we have to make the decision based on that sentence, and also do we feel that there's enough evidence? Sorry, it's my lawyer brain, going to go against staff's recommendation. That's the other element that is coming into my head.
I like that lawyer brain.
Ready to vote?
Yeah, I guess I would just agree with that, but also, you know, there's a pretty, pretty wide range there. And I think we all know what generally we want. There's some, some nuance there and I, there's some trust that needs to be earned on both sides. But yeah, I mean, I think we've, we've heard loud and clear from citizen, you know, all of our fellow townspeople. Like, we need more affordable housing. We have gone through a very careful process with this land use map and this, it fits.
And, and that like, there are many, many, many more steps and we should be carefully considering the way that we're engaging the public in those steps. And we need to make sure that when it comes time to subdivision and we have all the details in track. Like, I was not at the work session. I personally have not seen the concept plan. So I also know that we will all take that very seriously when it comes time to review what is actually going to be built.
Ooh, not to belabor this, but if I could pick up on that, like, I think what, what, I think I speak for all of us. Like, public engagement is good. I'm so glad everybody came out tonight. And like, keep paying attention to all those meetings, even if it's not the property right next to your house, right? That, that, this is kind of a holistic view that's coming down to one property in this case. Um, but that's kind of how all this gets thought about holistically.
Well, and I will say that, uh, since it looks like we're going down the R3 route, um, I would, uh, definitely encourage, um, everyone here to, uh, remind council of Mr. Harder's commitment to cap to 96 units, uh, in the annexation agreement. So that would be where that would have to, have to happen.
Agreed.
Call for question. Let's vote.
Over.
Yes.
Crevel.
No.
Deringson.
Yes.
Bush.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Motion passes for one.
Okay. And again, I want to just take just a moment to thank everyone here for coming and participating. I know it didn't go the way a lot of you wanted, but I think we've come to a possible compromise with the number of units, which I would personally feel pretty good about. So we will move this on to council and wish you well. And I, I honestly wish we'd have more of you at our regular meetings that didn't involve you. So please come back.
Very well informed public comment.
Okay.
Oh, we probably have something else to.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll let them out. We, uh, we will be finishing our meeting, so if you could quietly leave the gallery and chat outside, that would be great. Okay.
We just need a motion to adjourn for you.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, if we could take the chatter outside, that would be really helpful so we could conclude our meeting. That would be great. Thank you so much for coming. Sorry you think we're spineless.
Hey, Teddy, the man in the arena.
Yeah.
Teddy Roosevelt's.
Yep.
Yeah, that's right.
You want to do it?
Yeah.
Come on up.
So Carolyn, um, it, we are, uh, is there any, any further updates?
I don't believe so. Just a reminder that we do have meetings on the 4th and the 12th of August.
Of August? Are they regular meetings?
Um, the 4th is a joint work session on the ADUs, right, and maybe other stuff. The 12th is a regular meeting, um, because it's of the first public hearing for the land use code.
Oh, okay, great.
And then the last meeting in August will possibly be a continuation of the public hearing.
And that would be the 25th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, other than, depending on whether, you know.
Is that right? The 25th? Yeah, okay.
Question?
Yes, Giff.
Uh, since the 25th will be a continuation of the 12th.
Maybe.
Anyone not there on the 12th can't participate in the 25th. Is that correct? Since it's a public hearing.
Um, I'm not.
That is, that is correct. Uh, if you're not a part of the conversations around the land use code and that ordinance on August 12th, um, there, there'd be so much discussion about it, it would be.
No, I, I. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that.
Yep.
Now, I do think we should, um, take a bit of a roll call to see who will be there, expects to be there on the 12th
so that we at least have a quorum, but hopefully much more than that.
I will, I plan to be there.
I can be there.
Sarah can be there.
I can be there.
Salty can be there.
I'll be there.
Erin can be there.
I'll be online if that counts.
Dan will be online. Yep.
That'll be, all right.
But I won't be here on the 25th.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, it is possible that we will only take one meeting, but, uh, we wanted to leave that open for the potential. Not that we want you to continue it, but just for the potential.
Well, and if you need me, you need me. I can try to make it work.
Giff, can you be here on the 12, uh, 12th?
Yes, unfortunately, I can.
Okay.
I, I will, I will.
Okay.
Brian Colby said he will be out.
Okay. So is there any unfinished business?
I believe so.
Commissioner comments? God, I really appreciate you guys showing up tonight and doing your jobs. So well.
I actually do have a comment. At, at some point in the indefinite future, I'd like to go back to the whole trails connectivity thing from what came up, uh, whatever, it's like, it's a ridge, whatever. I'd just like to think about that a little more, just generally.
Maybe at a work session. Yeah, work session.
So I don't know if you heard that, Bill, but, uh, Dan is, uh, proposing we talk about trail connectivity and stuff at a work session at some point? Want to support that?
Uh, yeah, we could, we could certainly do that and, and maybe even invite, uh, a director post to be a part of that conversation.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yep.
We can't pick on these individuals.
Right, that's right. Okay, so, um, I don't have anything else. Do you, does staff have anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
All I have to say is I thank you all very much for being the planning commission. And I do not know what was specifically said to you at the dais, but, um, we have your backs.
Thanks, Bill.
We're spineless.
She said we're spineless.
But she didn't have the guts to say it into a microphone, so.
All right. It, uh, should we have a motion? A second? Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. This meeting is adjourned.
That's your camera.